Right?
Yeah.
For Lance.
Sin.
Mr. Merrill said.
Right.
And like.
Let's make it to order.
You take role, please.
Mrs. Leskowicz here, Mrs. Butler here, Mrs. Donahue here. Mrs. Kipwaker here.
Right?
I'm glad to be the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the next agenda, can I get a motion to do that?
I'll move.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
Can we have the role, please?
So I'm gonna say Mr. Beast officially arrived at five thirty one.
He's so close.
He is now present, okay. Mrs. Leskowicz?
Yes.
Mrs. Butler? Mrs. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Beast?
Yes.
Mrs. Kipwaker?
Yes. Do we have public participation?
Oh. Yes, we do.
Okay, Ms. Julie?
Sorry.
Okay, just a few things. I know you guys miss me, so I'm gonna make up for it today. Well, good evening. Okay, so just so you know, I'm watching. As predicted, after only a few months, the technology intern is now being hired into a new permanent position. It's about twenty-five new positions for the year, maybe to per take. The hiring has not been proportional to the growth of new students trying out to build an empire. My second thing is about the income tax levy. I would please ask that you don't put on there is continuing to leave it at five years. For these reasons, continuous takes away future voters' rights to vote. Both those in the community now and those who move into the community in the future. So your kids and grandkids who may come back here, you will have taken away their right to vote. And as the saying goes, no taxation without representation. Also, please consider the future of the township. Many are leaving due to higher taxes. And our township is a special place to live, and we want to remain attractive to keep our residents and to keep our property values up. So my question to you is this, why not stick to the five-year limit in order to keep the community behind you? There was no section upfront in the draft next week's minutes for the public comments, I sent you an email.
Yeah, Shelley fixed that, so we're okay now.
Um. And then giving a performance stipend to someone for doing their job, such as ending double bus routes, is not reasonable to me. Does it get paid back to the school when a double bus route is again needed? Shouldn't we have some reduced hours on the agenda for the drivers who are no longer driving the double routes? And by the way, I have no problem giving performance bonuses. In fact, I'd like anything based on merit. We have increased salaries exponentially, as evidenced by the huge increase in the five-year forecast numbers for salaries as a percent of the budget. Let's give bonuses based on going above and beyond, not for just completing work that is part of the job. And as always, thank you for allowing me to speak. That's it. That's the other one?
Yeah.
So now we will review the agenda. Meaning.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll go with the religion, the agenda. Speak up, I'm sorry. Come from that way. And we didn't pick up.
Yeah.
Maybe better. Oh, and then approval of the minutes, and then we're going to public participation, if there is any. And then we'll start with the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. So superintendent's report, like I said, I will explain these in more detail next week. But I wanted to, A, thank the township for letting us use get the salt from their facility. So Julie, if you can thank the other trustees as well, that's greatly appreciated. Yeah, the township offered, we get the salt from their facility instead of driving to Troy for them.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that. Dedicated school staffing is being implemented, it's underway, try to get rid of our. Substitute issues, got a lot of people that we assign enough subs here. So, like I said, and then the educational planning has started, we talked about, you know, what it looks like. With our physical constraints. With FMD, like you met them, you met them, we've talked with. And I've talked with them at length, they met with the entire staff, there's a survey that's gonna go out. Get some feedback from them, I'll send it to you too. And I obviously believe in strategic plan, like get that thing rolling in January. So. So that's, I met with. The brass at the Wright Pat Air Force Base for superintendent outreach meetings, those myself and all the superintendents in the area. We talked about Impact Aid, we talked about ways that we could support each other. It was a great meeting, I was there for a couple hours, and it was. It was enlightening, and it was good to talk to. Some of the other superintendents that do it, and that impact aid, I saw that form today, and the guy from. Matt River, has been doing it forever, he said he'd come over and help.
Oh, Chad?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chad, I got the form from Jerry, their treasurer, so he's been helping me, yeah.
Yep, so, and that Impact Aid is just, it's something we can take advantage of, give more money back to the school.
Right, we're gonna send it out on the thirteenth.
Yep.
The survey, we're gonna do it early.
December, December fifteenth?
Thirteen, we'll send the Impact Aid survey out, and then if we get them all back, I hope by January tenth, then we can submit and see what happens, because it's due by the thirty first, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure more things will happen before now, next Tuesday, but.
Yeah, the plan is to submit for operating money as well as to see if they have any construction funds available, given our. Anticipation.
And the surveys do back on January tenth?
January tenth, yeah, after the holidays.
Okay, and they're going on the final forms?
No, not this year.
Because these have to, well, these have to be paper.
Yeah, they have to be on paper. Federal government, just like. Still like taxes, so yeah, so it has to be on paper for right now. I'm planning to, and I've asked if we can get our electronic forms approved, and so they're. Working to get me scheduled for that, and I gotta work with Jason in final forms.
Yeah, because the way that presented here from the Air Force, she told us, she. I mean, she opened my eyes to a lot of different things, and then had me out to the superintendent. They, they're a vast, you know, resource that we can draw from. We can help each other, so it was pretty, it was good meeting, Impact Aid was part of it, right, I mean, get those forms in, but. I mean, there were many other things that they're willing to do and open to ideas, so it was good. There is a new colonel on the base, met him, seems to be pretty good, so. That was a meeting, so, plus, you know, an overview of the updates, like I said, there'll be more, I'm sure, I'll go a little more depth in it next week. We've got a, our student recognition. Tiffany Moore should be here, she's recognized as the commended student by the National Merit Scholar Program. Pretty impressive, I never got one of those letters, but. Congratulations, Sarah, so hopefully she can come and talk about that. Important dates, you can see on here, we got the workday. Winter break for MBCTC, us, teacher in service, third grading period, federal holiday. Are there any other dates you see that we're missing that you want me to add? Okay.
Just have to decide on the organizational meeting, have we done that yet? Did I miss it?
It's on here.
Okay, yeah, so next week, gives some thought, has to be before the fifteenth.
Right, right now it's a draft, it's on the agenda too, but the draft is, right now, technically, January seventh, is the organizational and regular. Just has to be before fifty, like Tina said, but. Stick with the Tuesday theme, that would be.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just doing conjunction, yeah.
Right, we do the organization first, and then do the regular.
Okay.
Yep, and the treasurer's report.
Okay, so treasurer's report, we'll go through the monthly reports, as, you know, have everything finished except. The nifty little presentation, so I'm working on that. We'll have the November check register for everybody's approval, it's out there, the amended certificate. Where we're gonna make adjustments to the budget and the revenues. Actually, revenues are coming in higher, so that's always a good thing, and I'll go into detail about that. Next week, and then there's the second resolution for the tax budget, which is out there, and I just finished the tax budget this afternoon and loaded it as well. So you have a full week to look at it, I have a hard copy, so I can go through and make sure I didn't miss any numbers, and. So that's gonna be, it's out there in draft form for you to review now, but I'm gonna double check it before it goes live. So the tax budget will be finished and for your approval, so we'll be early, and it'll go out.
Elon's name's on there.
Is this really one?
So is Mrs. Mansfield's name on the.
Which one?
On the resolution. Page three of the resolution mentions Mrs. Mansfield.
Oh, no, I gotta get that off.
It says that she seconded it, right there, Mrs. Mansfield.
There it is, okay, so I thought, you know, I didn't, yeah. So like I said, I was gonna go through that one more time, both of them, and I'll make sure. Yeah, I didn't see Danny.
Oh, on the voting.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, on the voting, on the actual agenda.
Up front?
On the actual agenda.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I have it. Get up here, Dana, okay. So I will get that fixed, thank you. There, oh, here, yeah. He pointed right at it, so, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Beast.
No worries.
So, and then that's all I have for right now, so that'll be next week.
Yep, and then we'll go into recommendations for best band personnel.
Okay, yeah, so what's on here is Matthew Colbert, the technology assistant, step zero, sixteen seventy-five an hour. Currently, we've got Jason Cook as the director, Austin Womack works middle school, high school, and Matt Reed does the elementary just here. As he's the one at the elementary. You know, as we move forward. Just so you know, Matt, Matt works every day here, typically now, he just fills out time sheets, because we haven't worked for him. I would also like Jason Cook to do less break fix and more global thinking about how technology can drive a curriculum. I'd like to get some more technology into the curriculum, so there's some things I wanna, like to move forward doing that, so that's why he's on there. He's currently working, because now just filled out time sheets, but I'd like him to stay, you prove it, not. Okay, but that's why he's here, that's why he's on there, and like I said, I wanna get Jason out of the. You break, we fix mode, right, he's the tech director, and I want him to. Globally think K twelve, what does it look like, what can we do, and we got our, we got. Computer wifi doesn't work all the time, computers go down, and we got other things that are more important than him. Fixing the Chromebook, and sometimes that's what he does, and sometimes he does a lot of other things, but he gets drawn back into sometimes the. Set cycle, it's, you know, and it's not. Matt's got a thousand kids at the elementary by himself, you know, it's a lot of people, so, and they got Raptor machines and things put down and things break, so. Any questions on that, we will answer them, but you know, I look at, if I look back at his. You look back at Jason, and when he did his, his technology update, I mean, you know, there's some bigger picture items there, if we go into the strategic plan. You know, we're only gonna get more kids, so that's the recommendation, so.
Can you just remind me, what's the department look like today currently?
Three people, Jason Cook, Austin Womack, and Matt Reed.
Okay, he's one of the three.
The one that's on here, he currently works as, he's.
This is a new.
This will be a different, another man.
Another man.
There'd be another.
Yeah.
Matthew, yeah, Matt Reed was here, Matthew's the one that works daily. You know, it's, I think it's similar to our daily subs, right, we've got subs in the building that are daily subs, because there's always somebody absent. That we pay for every day, and we're paying him now, we just want to keep him, so. Does his job, but that's what it looks like now, there's three now, there'd be four with him.
Okay, I apologize, I had to ask again, because that's when the one left earlier this year, I kind of lost track of, I lost sight of.
We've had a little turnover.
And then is Jason responsible for supervising them?
Oh, yeah.
He's a drug hauler. He did all that.
Yep, yeah, he'll take care of all that, that's his job, one of the things. You know, I mean, he was on a call, Jason was on a call with me. With Prakata, we were looking at some security systems, right, he's on a call with me on. What they call rooms, which is part of APTG. You know, I want Jason on those things, because it doesn't make sense to buy things if my tech director says it won't work, you know, I mean, so you need to, yeah, that's a great idea, but can we implement? I mean, I don't, so I need him on those calls, I need him to think like that, instead of like, I can't come right now. I gotta sign up to load her computer, so.
What'd you say Matthew's current position is?
He's currently, right now, he's, he's, he's a tech assisted job, but he just filled out time sheets. He's working for us as a, in a sub role, he's.
A sub, okay.
Yeah, he's a sub, he's not, he's not our employee.
But he was an intern.
Was an intern at one point, yeah, now he's not, yeah, now we just kept him on as a sub. Like a sub teacher.
Yeah. So there would be no need for a sub technology.
Correct, if he hired, we wouldn't. Good, okay. Unpaid leave. We've got. A bus driver, a bus driver, and assistant to the treasurer. We have one more coming, it'll be on next week's agenda for unpaid leave. I'm waiting for her, she's gonna have to verify with your officer personally, your time, it's. Interpreter from the elementary.
Oh, yes. Shelley told me about her today, I told her to send it to me.
You just need to figure out how much leave she has, and if it's unpaid, but these are the three so far. Resignations, we've got our English language support specialist has quit. Sevda, she worked a few days and then decided she don't wanna work here anymore, so she's resigned. So we're still looking for another one of those. And then that is. It's me on the Google conversation. Go to my recommendations, certified personnel. Looking to hire Kate, so Kate Brooks is a substitute teacher, she actually, we've done this before with Minis. This is the same thing for your, your student teacher, hired her as a sub.
Yes.
So, worked out well.
Yes.
So we've got one in a high school, and she wants to sub, she has her certificate and everything, it just, it's quality sub, and, you know, they work when they can, when they're not in class.
Yeah.
You know, they notice school, end of the kids, so that part's good. Leave without pay, again, Tara McCormick, she's got four days and one day, one, four in January and one in February. Substitute teacher list, that's the same, it's dwindling, I think we're down like under twelve people.
I mean, it used to be like seventeen pages long, now I'm not, I'm not.
That was like three, four, front back. It's the one. So, and then approval, set agenda for certified. And then business, we've got parent transport reimbursement agreement, so. That is on there, just, we've got a student that they drive every day to school, because we can't transport them, so there's a lot of. Physical restraints, so we do that, they do that, and we pay them. And then the performance stipend, which was discussed earlier, like I said, this was Jacob Willhite, and it was for me, it's performance goal limiting double routing. It's in his contract initially when he was hired, if you remember, he came from Reynoldsburg, he took a pickup to come here, he wanted to be here, he wanted out of Reynoldsburg, he lives closer to here. Just to highlight some of the, some of the transportation, limited double routing, he had to assess the number of conditions and currently on buses in the district when he got here. We had several units sitting out back, remember, those are the ones we sold. They were tagged by the state of Ohio Highway Patrol, in our, went out of service. We moved forward with staffing to remove some of these routes, we also didn't have enough buses to even staff drivers to eliminate, so that. There were a lot of things that he did behind the scenes, he, you know, he calculated the routes, he said, okay, well, we don't. Even if we had drivers, we have enough buses, so we'll make a route, so. We had zero sub buses, so when a bus would break down, they sat till we got it, but he dropped off and back. He was, you know, they evacuate, or you know, they get in an accident, things like that, so order to safely transport, you know, state of Ohio recommends that each school district. Operating transportation department have access to a spare bus. We've got routing software now, and that is seventy-five percent of the drivers are using it, you should have all that implemented and uploaded by the end of school, so let me start. Implemented and uploaded by the end of school, so let me start.
End of this school year or end of this calendar year?
School. Yeah, they should be able to use it before they leave to make sure it works, and we should be able to use it full time, starting.
But not everybody's using it currently.
We have seventy-five percent of our stuff, our bus drivers using it, they'll all start to use it, but it's just uploading all the information. Getting them to use it.
Have you got any feedback on it?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to them after school, when I went out of school, when middle school, high school gets out, and they seem to like it, I mean, it's new.
Right.
I think it's pretty cool, I mean, it's, should save us time next year.
And it is gonna be mandatory that they all use it.
Oh, they're gonna use it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this, this, they're learning now, they'll use it. I'm like, yeah, your job.
Right, exactly.
So, I agree, so that's, uh, so that's why that's there, and then. Prove with some sense of that for business items, and then we've got the. Facilities committee, Natalie, we have a facilities committee meeting next week's. Great, I'd ask you now instead of calling you next week.
I said it would probably later, later this week, we'd be talking to each other.
Right.
Um, we can, um.
I just, I mean, it's up to you, I just didn't know, I thought I'd ask since we were here.
Um, tell me again, have you met again with the FMD group of?
We have, and I think, wanna hear a suggestion.
Sure.
Okay. Give my two cents of what I want it. Because sometimes that happens too. I would say, we've met with them and I would think, uh, you guys get a link to the survey, and I would think that when they come back out, I think it could. Not this Tuesday, but I think like in January, a good facilities committee meeting would have them come down and. Possibly, you know, maybe the developers, some other people involved in that meeting, big picture. Athletics, buildings and grounds, things like that, that's my suggestion, but. Because they could come to like the January meeting, explain what they've got so far. It's an idea.
Will they have enough information?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, they, they met with the staff, they met with all three buildings, and then they'll have the information from the survey. So. It's an idea, it's more February. As I said, this is more, I mean, this isn't detailed specifics, this is more about. In general, what do you want, what can we do, where we're at, next step, it'll bleed into like the strategic plan.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want one next week, you don't want to wait.
Yeah. I think tentatively that's January seventeenth, correct, I think, is the date for that, I think we said.
Seventh, well, we're gonna have the meeting, we're gonna have the meeting for the fifteenth.
Right, both fifteenth. First Tuesday in January is the seventh, and second Tuesday is fourteen.
Fourteenth.
We usually do it all in one day, right? We do the organizational meeting and then immediately go afterwards, we go into the regular meeting.
Yeah.
So if the board wants to continue that, I guess we tentatively suggested January seventh, yeah.
Yeah. That's true, yeah, so. But that, that would be the regular meeting for January, not like the workshop meeting.
Right, yeah.
Right, so we would wanna have a facilities meeting, kind of that.
Right, no, we, I mean, you kick it to February, first work session in February, that could be a topic.
So if we continue with the.
Tuesday.
First Tuesday and second Tuesday or second Tuesday and third?
We do second and third, right?
Right, so it would be February eleventh.
Uh, well, I can hold for today and I'll get back to you by like Thursday. Please.
We'll talk about dates too, right, Monday, when we get to the.
Yeah.
I like the Tuesdays. Used to it now. Um, when I don't spend Tuesday nights here, I don't know what to do myself. I wander endlessly around, I like Tuesday nights here. So. And then liaison reports and then, uh. Number ten. Preparation.
Should we say that we think we'll be the seventh in January or the fourteenth, if we, if we stick with the. Yes.
January seventh is township.
Seven is what?
A township meeting. Second and third, so the second Tuesday would be the fourteenth.
Fourteen.
So not, so we wouldn't do it on the seventh, we'd do it on the fourteenth.
Well, that, yeah, that's what you wanna, yeah. Has to be before the fifth day. Yeah, so the fourth day's before.
If it's just another storm, you don't, you don't. Be here, I'll come get you.
So, but yeah.
Do you have to file anything that says we've had our meeting? Is there anything you have to follow up and do?
No, we've gotta get the second resolution for the income tax.
Tax passed, yeah.
And it's gotta be filed by the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four, yeah.
So, we need to have that meeting.
So are you saying that to be on the same side, we should have it on the seventh or?
I think we'll be okay. We can dig out by seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so next week, if you wanna do the fourth day, we just fix that and we'll move on, yeah. It's like living on the edge, wanna live on the edge, alright. Yeah.
Yeah.
So then, the only other thing is, um, nominating the president, president pro temp.
Yeah, so the, like, somebody asked, I think Natalie, you did it last year.
I did.
So, you know, you need to pick the, uh, president pro temp for. Your exation, the meeting you guys will vote is president, best president.
Usually the outgoing president does it, but. Our outgoing president was voted out of office last time, so Natalie took over their frame source, so. But just food for thought, you guys can nominate whomever you want. They just have to start the meeting and then whomever is elected president takes over.
Right.
Yeah. Or Jack.
Something to think about for. Next week.
Yeah, next week, we decide, but this, that's what it is, this is like I said, it's a temporary position, usually.
So, um, yeah.
And then, uh. Okay, yeah, that's it for them.
The only other thing that might be added or needs to be added, um. Is the income tax, right?
We, yeah, yeah, we need to talk about. Well. The income tax is obviously going to be on that. It's going to be on the meat, the question is, um, you know, the income tax discussion, if you go back to the work session, you know, item five. Final decision on length of time for income tax redo, we've got, um, you'd have. Resolution one needs passed, uh, next week.
Next week, yeah.
Resolution two needs to pass in January.
Right.
And it needs to be filed by the twenty-fourth of Jan.
So, the only thing I need to know in order to get the final resolution, to get the resolution started is the. Are we doing five years, seven years, ten, fifteen, twenty?
Who wants to start with the discussion?
But what I did do is I reached out to, um, the state, because they have to give us the amounts. Um, and I highlighted here, earned income, um, is twenty-two. Two million, two point four million and some change, but what's interesting is the mileage necessary to raise that is eleven point seven seven. So if we didn't pass an income tax levy for point seven five percent on earned income only. It would be, we would then have to ask, the only other option for us would be to ask for an eleven point seven seven property tax levy. Um, and, and I know Miami's bird was successful in a double digit, uh. Property level recently, or within the last couple of years, hmm, historically, that is not the case, right? Uh, most people will say no to that, so, um, yeah. And this is the point seven five percent is the lowest in Miami County, everybody else is at least one. One and a quarter, one and a half, you know, so we're still, um. Leading the pack as far as being the lowest is, is slash tax in the community, so those are my two cents.
Okay, so, you want mine? So, in my opinion. Somebody's been doing this for a long time when it comes to levies. From what I've heard at these board meetings, and from what I've heard, I've talked to people in carriage trails, when I've talked to people in the township. Talked to people at Rotary, I don't see, um. I don't see a pathway to a continuous earned income tax level. My opinion, I think. You know, a couple, a couple of things we forgot, I, I look at it like this, I mean, I've heard what people have said, I heard what Julie said, I heard what they said last. Month, you know, I've heard all that, I hear that when I'm out, and I ask the question, you know, I said, when I go to places, I ask them, what do you think? It's not that they're strictly necessarily opposed, but you know, I think, you know, you've got two shots at this, we want, I don't wanna go into November not having it passed. Uh, that's scary to me, and that's, you know, you're talking two point, you're talking two point eight, three million dollars that we have one shot to get, right? And I think we put our best foot forward, we ask for a five year, everybody gets to keep their little bit of control over it. But at the same time, it's still for five years. If we do a good job, I don't see why we wouldn't do it again, people moving into the district, we'll still pay for this five years and I. You know, I've been places, you know, I'm from a place where the ANX, Columbus ANX property, right, and. It's been going on for forty, it's fortieth year now, you know, and they, they took, they took, uh, land from Columbus, Dublin took it, Worthington took it, New York took it. They all took that and they took it and, and everything's been fine, uh, and it made it every year, every five years where they. You know, now it's, now it's a solid wall, but I'm just saying, I just think that. You know, if we do a good job and if you move in, you come to Bethel because you love the school, or you've got a nice house and a good property, and I think, you know. I could show you a thousand places that property value tank from the school tank. Um, so I think, you know, there's a concerted effort there to support the school system, even if you don't have kids in the district, because it. Keeps your property value, you know, higher, so obviously it's your call, um. I'm just giving you the feedback that I've talked to, I've talked, I've asked people to reach out to me, they've called me, they've lived in all parts of Bethel. But the consensus was five. So.
Did you ask what seven?
You know what I don't like about, this is my personal feeling on seven, people don't know what's, I never see a seven year.
Seven, yeah.
And I think it scares the, uh, heck out of people, because they're not, it's different. And people don't like different sometimes, so I. I see, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, ten, I mean, ten's a long time.
Ten's a long time.
You get to ten, you start to get the same argument that, you know, you're gonna sign with me for a decade, I can't make a decision, you know, I. You know, and if I look at. The one that failed was continuous, right?
Correct.
But, I mean, it was close, you know, and I think if we just, if you say. It's five year, I think, I would hope that it would pass, I mean, we've done some good things here, we've got some good momentum, but. I would hope it would pass and no increase, and just give us five more years, get things organized, but. That's seven and ten, I mean, and continue, look, I've been in a place where you have continuous levy, I'm not getting it, makes sense, um. But, you know, you also have to explain, you know, a lot of times, earned income tax is a little different thing, you know, property value, you know, the. Real estate piece, because it's the flat lines, but this one goes up and people make a mark, so, you know, it's like. It's, uh, I mean, it's tough, but I understand that continuous makes it easier to plan. Um, that's for sure, and it makes sure that everybody that does move into the district pays their share. This all makes sense to me, I'm just, I'm just telling you, in this area, the feedback I got was fine. So. I'll campaign anything you want me to, but. I'll do that just because it's part of my job, I want to, because we need it, but, you know. It's a lot of late nights and a lot of weekends and things like that, but it is what it is. But. That's all I got, um, I mean, you all live here, you hear what you hear, and when you tell me. I know, I, I know it makes sense, but I'm just saying, we think we can pass what's fair to the people that are living here.
Yeah, and I think, I know all the residents now support us and would continue stores and, and we probably won't even have this conversation. It wasn't for the care shows two point oh, and that, that's the only reason that I was pushing for continuing this, because then you, you are into the unknown. And we are going to get more and more expenses as they come along, that, and then they're going to make up. Free force of the district.
Really?
And, and so, yeah, and, and so then we will, so if we're saying like our township people and stuff are, are against it and everything. They won't really have much of a, a say at that point anyways, because we drowned out by all the new people coming in, so. I, I think that, like you said, the change, and that's where I get wrapped up in, that this is different, this isn't, this isn't typical. If we were a status quo right now, we're at the tail end of care trails one point one, and nobody else is coming in, and when, I don't even think it'd be a conversation. Keep on keeping on, but I think that that, that's my only reservation about the continuums, is to get it. When they come in, and they come in knowing that that is a tax that they're going to have to pay. And, and like you said, like when we started doing on strat planning and stuff, I, I think that there's big potential here to do lots of good things. Like a drone program, the bot cat, make the podcast into a class.
You need to change your curriculum here, I mean, we don't need to do the curriculum from the fifties and sixties and seventies, right?
Memorization.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's like, that's why I want Jason to think differently, that's why I want the staff to think differently, that's why I want. You know, not that those things are bad, but what do, what do kids need, what are they interested in, what they need to work? You know, what makes them tick, you know, what, what's a productive job in society?
Right.
You know, and it's different than it was ten years, it was twenty years ago.
I mean, we're only a year out from the middle schools having two study halls during the day.
But see, that can't happen, I mean, it's like, that's what I'm saying about the curriculum, we got kids that are seniors that don't have any class. I mean, I'm saying, it's just, it doesn't need to be that way.
Right, yeah.
And I've got a kid that never went to college and makes more money than my nurse daughter.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
And they're with school and works for a podcasting company.
And you know, we, we cater, or not cater, but we recognize the CCP, so we've got kids that are given that opportunity to get their college degrees early. Then we've got the CTC that recognizes the kids who may want a skilled trade and stuff like that, but then we have the other third that can't get into the CTC. And have no desire to go to high school, and that's where we can pick up some of those kids too.
You look at trades program.
Yeah, we need to look at creating a CTE twenty-six and offering in-house.
Right.
Career tech.
In partnering.
Which you guys don't have, which I've never been at a district where there's not been a CTE twenty-six, have you? Yeah, so that is something, you know, I talked to Matt about, but had never really sat and talked to Mike about, there's additional. Funding for that, there's, you know, and you need to offer those in-house. Because the CTC is.
Right.
Hacked, yeah, so.
But you also need space.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there, there's, I mean, we have limitations to certain things, right? And there are other ways to overcome them, sure, um, get something outside the box, some, sure. If you get funding from certain people, sure, you know, I mean, there, there's ways to do that, I mean, and I, I've had several people. Let's say somebody, I mean, three, come to me and say. They really would like to talk about some larger donations for, you know, a specific project, or I mean, I mean, okay. You know, let's have that discussion, you know, but I think, yeah, you really have to look at. It, it's an exciting time, but it's a scary time, right? You've got all these things that you wanna do, and there's a few things we need to do. And there's some things you want to do, you know, and how does it all fit in, and, you know. How are you cost effective, but supervised, it's good for kids, and, you know, safety, security and all those things, you know, it's a different time. It was ten, twenty years ago too, so, um. Yeah, I mean, with that being said, and I think that, you know, a lot of these moves and these discussions are. You know, essentially drive curriculum, I can, I, I think we've got some stability here now, I think we, you know, you can. Make curricular changes and staff changes and push the needle if you got to deal with all the chaos, you know. Think we're not, I think we're, we're there now, hopefully, I think, you know, people know that we're doing our best and doing a good job, but I think moving forward. You know, what we do now is ultimately our kids and driving cricket, oh, what do you need for that? Well, you need good staff, you need. People that work hard, people that are diligent, that care, you know, and you need facilities. So. I mean, we had a basketball game here the other night, uh, I think with New Carolina, it was bad. I mean, we had a basketball game here the other night, uh, I think with New Carolina, it was bad. Four and O, but, that's good. So that, uh, Northridge would be the test, they play Northridge, so, it should be separate and over one of that. But, um, I mean, I think that's, you know, ultimately what's about.
So when they say, so I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the, when they don't have a right to vote. Are they just, they, I mean, do they just wanna control the purse strings, is that what they're?
Are you asking me? This is what I would say by, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's like Boston Tea Party, uh, but. I mean, I think what they're getting at, and people say that to me, I think what they're saying is, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet on you for five years. But you know what, I don't wanna bet on it forever, but if you show me you're doing a good job, I'll bet on you again. I mean, I think that's the, that's what they mean, it's not like we're taking away their voice, I mean, people come here and talk all the time, right? I, I got a nice voicemail the other day, so I wouldn't have it, you know, it's like, uh, it's what it is, yeah, but. He, at the end of the day, I think what they're, what they're saying is that I'm just not comfortable saying forever. You know, and then. And they just, you know, when I say they're taking, taking their voice away, I just mean, they don't get the right to vote every five years. It's, but I think it's that, it's that, right, it's like, I'm gonna bet on you once. You helped me, you showed me, I didn't make the right bet, I'll bet on you again, you all support you. And every five years, you, every, you know, it's an interview, every day is an interview.
And, and I guess that's where I'm at, is if you don't like the job I'm doing, just don't hire me back, just don't vote for me, and you get to vote for us every two years.
But, and, but on the levy side, you do that continuously, they never get to vote again. I think that's what they're getting, I mean, boards are bad, yeah, you guys, you, your term every. Every two years, but you know, you got a four-year term, four-year term, and if the community doesn't like it, that's what happens, right? It's politics. Happens everywhere, people don't like something, they vote out, I mean. Because that's government, you know, I think, but, um, but if they do like you do, they vote you, keep you in if you still wanna run. I think that's, that is, yeah, they can make choices, I think their argument here is. Well, we can make choices on the board, but you've already decided for me, that I never get to choose, like, yeah, I never have another voice on. But that's the, the rub here, so. For the people I talk to, so it's like a, you know. Kind of like marriage, you know, continue your time forever. Just kidding.
Huber hasn't passed a levy in twenty years, but that's, they're not going to Huber.
People I've talked to have, have expressed the same thing that you've talked about, like.
And we probably haven't talked to the same people, so.
Probably not. So, everybody I have talked to has said, five years, five years, don't wanna continue us. We already have like five continuous levies that people aren't even aware of anymore, because they've been around. You know, they don't ever come before them again, um, so the, yes, everybody that I've talked to has said. Keep it continuous, we support you. Or five years, we support you, we like what you're doing, but five years.
I, I can see it, I mean, I can see both sides, and I can see the people we have now, it's just that, I'm not a risk taker, and that's the. Unknown people that are coming in.
I, I mean, both sides are valid, I'm just, I like to put things on that I can win.
So, I just don't wanna miss the boat and then.
But you'll miss the boat if it's continuing and get, and it goes down. That's like cutting off your nose to spite your face, you know?
Even though we have another shot at it, I just don't wanna go into November.
Yeah, that we don't do well in November, we do well in May, but we don't do well in November. November's not a good time to do it.
What do you, do you thoughts?
So I, I just did a little survey to people that I talked to, and you know, when you talk about the renewal of what we have already. The, didn't seem like status quo was good, then there was no qualms, but you start talking to for your length or, um. Continuous, they kinda get a little nervous, they're not really sure what all that entails, and it, it kinda makes it a, a bigger thing for them, so. Um, I think, everybody I talked to, of the ten to twelve people I reached out to. Um, some are retired, so they don't even actually have to pay that earned income.
Yeah, they don't pay it, but they still want the right to choose.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they'll support where we are today, is what the feedback I got, so the five years. Was what my takeaway was as well.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just curious.
Well. I, I mean, my personal opinion doesn't really play into this so much, is that I wanna make sure that we have the funding we need for the school. So, I want, I would rather have five year in the hand, for sure, and I mean, nothing's for sure. Then, I, I, I just, I just have questions about the, the fund, the tax funding we're gonna get from two point O. I don't really have a lot of confidence or faith in the government to the south of us, and I, you know, and I don't. I, I don't want the township people to pick up the tab for two point O in perpetuity, when the new people coming in don't wanna vote for it. So, I mean, I, I, I just, I wanna make sure that our school is funded because. That they're put, putting that burden upon us, I don't know that we're gonna get as many kids from two point O as we got one point O. The, uh, starting price and that sort of thing.
True, talked about.
Yeah, I just. I, I wanna fund a school, I mean, we don't have problems with funding our extracurriculars and making sure we have all the fun stuff in our family. But when it's time pony up for education, and the way our taxes or levies sometimes, we, we don't have money for it. I get that, but I, I'll go, I mean, I'm, I'd rather have a five than not have continuing.
And I think, like, as kids move in, right, you still get some money from. Right, and you'll get, and they'll pay the five years of the income tax, and they, I think, I talked to some people that testified the other day for the. Fair funding formula, and I think that they're going to fund that again, which is good for them.
I hope so, yeah.
As is, fall in, I think they'll fully buy it, so, I'm like, you know, if. If that's the case, and part of this too's, and a part of this too's on me, I, you know, if this is the course you're going, and I gotta talk to Jeff. Make sure that, you know, we are on the same page, I, I know, and I, but you know, and the developer, and I make sure Bill, Jeff, me. If it, we're, we're all understanding what it is that we wanna do here, because, you know, we can all talk the game, but we, you know, whoever it's, where we at.
I, I just, I mean, the, I've been to too many, many meetings and heard too many, well, we'll pass it like this, but if we don't like it, we'll change it. From the south, and it is one-sided, it's taxation without representation. As far as we're concerned, we've never had a voice, one way or another, how this affects us, we've just been the victim in this, in this game, so. I don't want us to fall and to come up short, and as we look at these really exciting times to build these new programs and to really get. Focused on, uh, the passion of becoming generation and what's going to drive their success, I don't wanna be short funded.
No, I agree, I mean, I see these kids every day, they're great kids.
I mean, I don't wanna leave with any money on the table either, you know?
Or take it away. They, they have it, and then we have to take it away because now we don't have.
So, yeah, I throw in with the five, though it's not my personal. But of course, I won't, I won't, I won't be around very long, my forever is only fifteen years, maybe, you know?
And then if the new people do come in with lesser kids, yes, the property value is, is an argument, but then also, maybe they don't really care then. If they find this or not, because it doesn't truly affect them, other than if the property goes down.
But I would think, I mean, I would think if you moved to Bethel, as opposed to Dayton, or Huber.
Or another development.
You are going to. Coming here for a reason. You know, and you want, you know, you have a nice house and you want to, you know. Rising value, and you want to appreciate all those things, right? To me, that just makes common sense, you know, if I wanted to, like, if I wanted a cheap house, I'd go to, you know, inner city Columbus. You know, I mean, that's the thought process. But, you want a house that appreciates, and so where does it go? School, school districts, you know, and I think if. If people are gonna come in here, I think they, I don't think anybody buys a house to see it's appreciated.
Oh, no.
Not to say, but I mean, the school district is a drive, is probably the most prominent factor in real estate.
And then to make, to make the school district attractive, we have to offer those other programs, and if then we don't have the money for the programs, then we can't offer the. The stuff that would attract them here, because right now, we, we're attracting them because it's a small school, it's rural, they get the best of both worlds, that. Those types of things, but another subdivision comes in and another development, they keep going.
People are selling land here, in Bethel. There, people are selling.
Left and right, and, and they're approaching the developer for, to sell more, and then at some point, we are the same size as some of those other schools. And if we can't keep up with what makes them attractive to come here, then.
Well, you gotta understand, like, I mentioned this last time, we are basically as big, not bigger than tip. We're almost as big as Troy, we're almost as big as Pickler, I mean, you know, you wouldn't have thought that, but it's coming. And, you know, we, it's not necessarily a bad thing, I mean, you have more things for kids to do, more offerings as you get bigger. But, I mean, the location of this alone, was sitting next to I seventy and two-state routes and accessibility to Columbus and. Dayton, I mean, I. The growth.
That's what attracted CT two is the seventy, seventy-five interchange, so we might, we might have commuters, we might have people who are just.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's the. The reality of it, that's the discussions I've had, I mean, I appreciate the feedback, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we do, we make the right choice for the community. And you guys are the voice of the community. I'll carry out your will, but, you know, I don't technically live here, right, but, you know, I care what you all think, so.
Uh, I appreciate during the public participation, uh, more of a discourse of reasoning. For, against the continuing, and so I appreciate Jewel giving some, some reasons. Last meeting, it just felt like, more like, well, a threat, if, if you don't do what you want, we're gonna threaten to. Shoot you down, I was like, well, I wanna hear, I wanna hear your reasoning, I don't want, I know, I know you're opposed to it, I wanna know why. So, um. I said before, that in the past, previously, I would have been against the continuing. And I can see the desire for it, but after the meeting last month, there was a post in the Alida. Page, and I was like, no, we need, you need to have checks and balances. We're all on, we're doing good things, they're gonna pass. You need to have checks and balances for when it's not going good, and things keep going the wrong way. And just keeps going the wrong way, you need another check and balance, so. Come back to five years.
All right. Well.
Well, I said that last time, last month too, I said that, oh, I think there's wisdom in passing the five year now just to get it done, and then continue, like. Years down the road, maybe talk about it, but.
See where you're at, yeah, no, I just, I mean, it's a big decision, right, and I just wanna make sure that we all had that discussion, talked through it. I don't disagree with anybody, I just, like I said, something like pass.
So, would we still do the campaigning and still do all that kind of?
Yeah, we don't take anything for granted, I, people need to know why, that's right, this is why, this is what used to drive me crazy when districts would do that. Well, you know, it's a renewal, we don't do, well, guess what? You do need to. Because I don't care if it passes ninety-nine percent, yes, good, we did a nice job getting the message out. You know, but I mean, I think when you do, when you do stuff like that, I think you're just trying to run it under the radar, and that makes people mad. They get winded, they come out and vote no, just because you're mad, you didn't tell me about it, you know, that kinda stuff, and I get it. That's, that's human nature, you know?
That's what you said last week, they vote beans.
Voting's emotional, I've said that for decades, it's an emotional response, it's that. You know, everybody, you know, some people may not pay what I afford, but the majority of people, they walk in there, it's a dollar sixty a day, right? I love this place, I can do it, you know, place, I hate that place, I'm, I'm not giving a cent of my money, no, you know, I mean, that's a. It's, that's what it is, you know, and if you can, if, and even the people that have voted, they've told me they've voted no of these before. We'd had this conversation, right, it was very civil conversation as to why. And I'm, okay, I get it, but, you know, at the same time, you, I. I think you can't pay, my philosophy is you can't pay as hard for a renewal, five-year renewal, continuing renewal, or even a new. You wouldn't notice the difference in the amount of effort, because you should put the same effort, because you owe it to the people to explain why you need what you need. And why we do what we do. And if anything, I tell people all the time, I said, you know, act, like, act, run a school district like you're running a levy today. You know, don't be nice for six months, you know, six weeks before the, and then, oh, you know, we need your money. That's another thing that drives people crazy. We are stuck in the position, you know, as I just laugh about this, because, you know, I can't pass, I can't pass increases of the district on the consumer. You know, I mean, gas prices go up, we make groceries more expensive, you know, I never see that, you know, but, we have kids. So I'm, you know, I'm in the business of the kid business, but as prices go up for diesel, electric, gas and everything else, I get more money for a kid. You know, so I'm like, all these expenses go up, and. I'm still, you know, I gotta pay this, and I'm like, but with that being said, that's why. You know, you always tell people, you gotta tell your story, you gotta, no, let other people talk for you, but you gotta run a district like you run a levy, because. You know, like I said, we don't pass the costs on to the children, but, you know, at the end of the day. You know, stuff gets more expensive and I can't raise the, you know, can't charge a kid from school. So, I just think that's, that's the business we're in, right? Stuff will continue to go up. And it's a spending cycle, right? Why do we always go back to the voters, you know, years after years after years? Well, it's, it's a cycle you can't break, because, you know, everything costs more, but I have no way to pass that on. So that's what they do, but with that being said, doesn't mean, oh, good, we're just gonna go spend all the money after more two years, no. Have the budget, you know, it's five years, okay, plan for it, we got money coming in, you got the funding for it, you got a lot of those moving pieces that. But you gotta plan, you know, I mean, from the little things to the big things, you know, don't. Don't have forty thousand dollars in your budget made, cause spend it on Post-it notes, because you didn't spend it, that drives me nuts, you know, that kinda stuff. Think about it, awful purchases, awful planning, and you tell the people why you need it, what you're doing. Don't see a problem. Most people wanna be heard and wanna be understood, you need to be able to answer your question why.
Oh, yeah.
So just to put it out there, you know, I want it to pass, right, you know, that's the primary thing. And when I made the suggestion to the previous board to do continuing, there were two reasons, you've got the substitute emergency levy that's up in twenty seven. Brings in about four hundred plus thousand for operating expenses, so, you know. In my world, from a financial standpoint, I would rather reduce that than to. You know, increase, you know, I would rather reduce that than renew it for the full price, yeah, for the full mileage, if possible. If we get the full funding from the state, you know, and we're fully funded, and that looks good, and you got your income taxes guaranteed. Forever continuously, right, then you can reduce property taxes when those are, when those come up. But without that, well, but you can't, um, but you can't do that if it's only five years, right? Because we're seeing our voter, we're seeing our voter, um, our community change, right? And the demographics are changing, but I get it, I want it to pass, so five years makes sense. It's just when that emergency levy comes up for renewal, then my recommendation is probably gonna be, we need to just renew it. Or, you know, look at ways, you know, that we're gonna need to keep that money in place, but of course, that's all contingent on the millennium budget as well. And whether or not the fair school funding plan is put in place, but, yeah, so, um. Earned income tax, nobody likes taxes, nobody thinks taxes are fair, but I always think that earned income taxes are. More fair than a proper. I always think that earned income taxes are more fair than a property tax. Because the property tax doesn't care how much money you make or how you make it, you just pay more. And and I've been searching for a home, as we all know, um, and Miami County is um, in demand, especially in this area. Because the taxes are low, so I get it when the community says we're paying too much, but. Really not compared to other parts of the of Miami County, and certainly not compared to some of the. You know, like Huber Heights, just over that one little line, there's a big increase in your property taxes, so, um, yeah. So, but I get it. I understand, um, either way, so if we want to guarantee, we can't guarantee anything. Again, but, you know, five years is fine. Yeah, that's what we need to do to get it to pass. It's just when we look at those demographics, that scares me. So in five years, what's it gonna look like? It's gonna be less township residents and more um. Carriage trail. And other areas that are coming, and so.
They're coming.
And that's all I'm saying as well, the status quo now would be fine, but it's, it's not gonna be the same.
It won't be the same.
Everything is changing.
It's very different now than what it was five years ago, so, yeah.
Oh, I met with a guy today that was from Russia. Had a long conversation. Interesting. Understand why he's here.
So what I'm hearing is I move forward with the resolution at five years. Then that's what I'll do, and I'll have that on the agenda in December for next week, right? One of the other things I forgot to mention that's gonna be on next week that we, that. Mike and I have been working on, I didn't know if you got your list or not. The science of reading stipends.
Yes, I do have my list. Mindy said it to me today.
Okay, so I just want the board to pass a resolution giving me the authorization to pay the science of reading. Stipends uh, at twelve hundred and four hundred respectively, respectively.
It's gonna be approximately eighty eight thousand dollars. We get reimbursed from the state.
Right, hopefully, yeah, so. Um, that's also gonna be on the agenda, so today was the day we were supposed to get the list, so.
I got the list, I got the list today.
There's a resolution, but I don't have the names, but we'll see about that in the names, so.
So, yeah, that'll be on, yeah, get that on, and then get them. Uh, get them paid. We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Yeah, that's something to talk about, yeah.
Have we heard anything more about or talking more about the um, excess that we have in our food service budget and? Needs there might be there?
So I, I sent an email today, because I was waiting to talk to Tina. You saw the email, Tuesday. We're gonna meet with them Tuesday.
Yep, I have some ideas. I'm sure those ladies have some ideas.
So do I.
Yeah, we all have ideas.
I talked to, I talked to them, uh, too.
Yeah, I don't know what their ideas are, so we'll see.
They're not bad, but yeah, I said, you know, when I. No, you know what we're doing? We're gonna make it like a food court. Kidding, Julie.
Are we close to that grant that does the three lunches and maybe?
Oh, you're talking about C P. Um, I'm not sure. Um, I think the last time I looked, we were.
We were close.
We were close, but just a tad bit over forty percent. I have to go back and look at the latest numbers. We just uploaded. Just not uploaded, submitted um, our latest student enrollment and teacher data, so I have to um. Get with Jennifer when she gets back in and talk to her about that, so.
So that's something we'll look into.
I just asked Jennifer too, for the last ten years of enrollment.
No, she didn't tell me that.
Reporter's gonna do an article to say, you know, they called me. There's a reporter, the news.
William Lutz, I hope.
Yeah, I think it was.
He's awesome.
Actually, I think I don't, I think that was what, who's uneven.
Oh, yeah, he, I mean, he just gives you. Gives you the facts and lets you make up your, your mind, but he's, oh, so fair. Yeah, I follow.
I was coming from, I was coming from.
Capacity, I think, is the name.
Yeah, I was coming from. Mindy's room, because we were talking about stuff today on the way back here, then to meet Shelley at three. And that email came up. And I'd asked, I had asked Jennifer for the last ten years of enrollment. So I'm curious, why? I know what it is now, but curious. But anyway, he wanted to have that discussion, so.
Oh, I hope it is.
But I'd asked her for those ten years for that reason.
I don't know um, about any data prior to twenty two, so we'll have to look.
We could find it. Somewhere, so.
Think that's what's up for next week. Is there anything else? So I have the resolution on there. I just have to get the list, so.
So we have to do two resolutions, you said, so what's, what's next week's resolution? What does that do?
Income tax resolution, earned income tax.
Right, but you, I thought we had it as like two parts.
You have to do another one in January.
So we have to do two readings, right?
No, you have two separate resolutions. There's one that needs to pass in December. Um, that gives us the authorization to proceed, right? And and then, yeah, it's a resolution of necessity and then to proceed is the one in January. And so I have to file both resolutions and the certification from the state with the auditor. At with the Board of Elections, but before January twenty fourth.
So next week, May?
Yes, okay.
So next week, we're all agreeing by resolution that we need the money.
Correct.
And then January, we're saying, yes, go ahead and.
Yes, so there will be.
But it's for the same.
Renewal of the income tax at point seven five percent. And then. We'll have the resolution for the science of reading. So if everything goes well, everyone will be rea, we will get reimbursement for every single stipend. Plus employer cost. Yeah, that's what, that's one of the things that I started talking to Aaron Roush and some other, what about the employer cost? Because, you know, every dollar you pay. An employee, you're paying an additional sixteen point seven five percent in just employer cost roughly, so. They're, they're gonna pay us back for most of that, not all of it, like the retirement Medicare, but not workers' comp and, you know. But that's okay. Better than something than nothing, but we'll discuss when and how and all that.
We will. You're fun. Good conversation.
Did you say fun or fine? It'll be fine.
He forgets what department he runs.
Alright, no problem. We'll have a discussion, so. Okay, I don't have anything else.
I'm good. Julie, you, will you help run the levy campaign with me? I'm good, I got nothing else.
Did you want her to speak up so we get it uncaught on the recording?
No, she just said she may or may not be allowed. I don't.
Oh, it's fine.
No one will know.
Alright, then, we're all good, right? Uh, okay, so can I, can I get a a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mrs. Leskovich? Mrs. Butler? Mrs. Donahue? Mr. B? Mrs. Kiplinger? Six thirty nine.
I mean, we're shot, we're gonna start doing videos on YouTube about how to do a board.